Hi, Mel. Apparently, we're shaking it up. How you doing over there? I don't know, they were like this.
Oh, you know what? They were probably when they were cleaning in here. They probably just got.
Well, apparently, we're going with it, so. None of that. And there's nothing for.
You may not get the pens back.
I'm so focused on the selection, that's all I'm.
You can keep a couple. Absolutely.
The Hill bill overdue return that thing.
I mean, it's mundane.
But every time I sign it or you sign it, somebody else is already circulating one.
I'm not signing.
Just wait for them to circulate it and they do it.
We've got a couple minutes, so I can.
I'm gonna send these around. These are the revolving loan applications from two weeks ago. I didn't realize I needed.
Everyone's signature?
Just four, just a majority. I'm passing three of these. These are the revolving loan fund applications from two weeks ago for the public wastewater. I didn't know I needed council signatures.
All right.
You're fired. That's the last straw, Mr. Manager.
It's really Brian's fault.
Oh, sure.
It's Brian's fault?
It must be because I complained about getting papers.
It's all right.
Testing blame doesn't fix a problem, Nicholas.
No, it doesn't.
Don't give him this on you.
And we can sign this, this is the resolution.
Hey, Teddy. How's it going?
Okay.
Good.
Were you at the State House today for your law?
Yeah.
How was it, though?
It was insane. It was wild. Specifically, on the overdose prevention bill.
Yeah, I saw it. They said, yeah, no, it failed. And then I said, yes, it passed.
And then Richie Westman, a Republican from La Mole, changed his vote to yes. And it passed without a vote.
He said what?
Yeah, he said he messed up the vote the first time.
I guess they are all set. Counsel, it is 6:00 PM on Monday, June 17, 2024. So I will call this meeting of the Berry City Council to order. Counsel, are there any adjustments to the agenda or, Mr. Manager?
None from me, Mayor.
Counsel? Okay, moving right along. Under Visitors and Communications, anyone wishing to address the counsel regarding an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we will move on to item four, the Consent Agenda. We're going to be approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, June 11, 2024. There are no licenses or permits to be approved. We'll be approving Resolution 2024-11, Veemers Plan D for the Police Department, which I will ask the clerk to read into the record. And lastly, approve the Local Emergency Management Plan, which you did receive in your packet. So, Madam Treasurer, if you would be so kind.
Certainly. Okay, Berry City Resolution 2024-11, a resolution related to the retirement benefits for the Chief and Deputy Chief of Police, whereas the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 004 will be offered Veemers Plan D upon ratification of a successor collective bargaining agreement. And whereas the City of Berry agrees to implement a defined benefit retirement program through Veemers Plan D for the Chief and Deputy Chief of the Police Department effective October 1, 2024, whereas current employees in these positions will be administered an election by Veemers upon execution of successor collective bargaining agreement. And whereas any employee hired into one of these roles after the successor collective bargaining agreement and Veemers shall vote shall automatically be enrolled in Veemers Plan D. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Chief and Deputy Chief of the Police Department shall be transitioned to Veemers Plan D and that the City of Berry and such employees will contribute their statutory shares to the cost of participation in Veemers Plan D for any employees switching to that plan with acknowledged changes over time by the Order of Berry City Council this 18th day of June 2024.
Thank you so much. Sorry to torture you. It gets better. I promise. Counsel, I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. It's moved and seconded on that side, but I didn't see it by Sam. Thank you very much. So there is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I have a.
Yes.
So today is technically the 17th.
It's true.
Yeah, the resolution was drafted for the 18th, so we can.
So there's a couple of things in the packet that the emergency plan and this both say the 18th, and it's really the 17th.
So, yes, Janet did change the, because she started working on this before we changed the date, so she did change the date on the Local Emergency Management Plan that will be signed. The resolution, it can be updated for today's date.
Okay.
Thank you for your diligent proofreading, as always. Is there any other corrections or discussion?
I have two more things on the Emergency Management Plan. That's under the Consent Agenda, right? The Spalding High School principal is no longer Luke Acer. Berry City Middle School Assistant Principal is not going to be Kristen Morrison, and the new superintendent will be Joanne Canning. So I'm just curious if, I mean, the numbers are all the school numbers?
Yeah. Yeah, so Counsel Spalding, so I actually talked to Janet about this because we know that there's sort of a transition going on. We decided to, it's also like a snapshot in time document. So we decided to sort of split the baby, so to speak, to keep the current persons in their positions, but have the right numbers, and then as there's transitions, we'll update it with the right names.
Okay, great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Of course, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Under Item 4A, Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to approve the city warrants from the week of June 19, 2024.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Motion carries. This is City Clerk and Treasurer. Do you have a report for us?
Just brief words. Okay, the Clerk's Office is in full budget revote mode. We have mailed out a total of 657 absentee ballots. We have received 357 back in the office. Just a reminder that all ballots that have not been returned as of today at 4:30 will need to go directly to the auditorium polling place, that is your official polling station. Any individual who places a ballot in any of the drop boxes, they are not checked as of today. Any ballots in the post office will be brought up for tallying. And any ballots without envelopes at the polling place, you'll have to go through the standard line of checking in and then placing your ballot at the end of the line as if you were voting in person. You can go directly up there with your ballot in the certified envelope and place it in the box and just walk out after that, only if it's in the certified envelope. That's it.
That's it.
There we are.
You make it sound so easy.
It's not.
I know it's not. Thank you for your good work and your hard work. We appreciate you. Anything, do you have anything under liquor or cannabis laws?
Not today.
Mr. Manager, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just three items for the council. The Auditorium Project application was submitted last week. Thank you to Counsel Stockwell. I knew the mayor was going to be out of town, so Counsel Stockwell had to step in to do a signature at the last minute so we could beat a deadline of June 14. And so that funding will be coming our way. That's $3.5 million that we are expecting from the United States Department of Agriculture. And as we've discussed, what we'll use that money for is to scope out sort of a phase of the project. The full project, when it was costed out, was about six and a half million. We're going to try to use this 3.5. We don't have to find any match, which is terrific news, and just really get started on making some much-needed upgrades to the auditorium. So that was very exciting to get that finally in and get the, you know, acknowledgement from USDA that it was submitted and good, and money will be coming our way for that project. The situation at the pool, so we have lifeguards beginning training tomorrow. We've gotten a lot of questions at City Hall about when the pool will open, and our response is as soon as we know how many of the lifeguards pass the class. So we have organized a class in Randolph exclusively for a group of people from Berry City who are interested in lifeguarding. As I said, the class starts tomorrow through Thursday. We have six candidates taking the course, and so hopefully they do well in the class, and we'll be able to open the pool likely by early next week. So we're gonna, you know, if we can do it sooner, we will, but that's what we're shooting for this at the moment. We have the director hired, we have one other returning lifeguard, and so out of these six, we're hoping they all make it through so we can have a full staff for the summer, but really optimistic. These are very interested in, you know, people who are really eager to do this, so we're hopeful that they make it successfully through the class next week. And then just an update for tomorrow, where the National Weather Service has issued a heat advisory for all of Vermont from Tuesday through Thursday. They're expecting the heat index to reach up to 105 degrees in some locations. So there's just, here's some cooling options for residents in Berry. One is the Aldrich Library, which is open from 11 to 6 on all those days. And we are going to open the BOR. The BOR doesn't have air conditioning, it's a little bit cooler than being outside. So we're going to open the BOR from 10 to 3:00 PM tomorrow for people to go and sort of get out of the sun as well. And then we're doing some old-fashioned cooling down. We're going to open hydrants from 12 to 2:00 PM in four locations around the city. So it'll be at Highgate, Green Acres, Courier Park, and the Public Safety Building. So from 12 to 2, you can, you know, just go get cooled off the old-fashioned way before air conditioners and run under a hydrant. So we will open those throughout the week. We'll see what the demand is, we'll see if we need to change locations, but right now we're planning to do those four sites. If there's any updates, we'll give them on social media and on the website. So that is it for me.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Two quick things. I know Nicholas "The Good" Sam is also opening for a cooling shelter, so just as the city is sending out communications about that, throwing "Good Sam" on there. I don't remember the offer.
I'll touch base with Rick.
But I saw that today. And then assuming all six candidates go through the lifeguard training, would that get us to fully staffed?
Yeah, that would be sufficient for us to open the pool. Yep.
Any other questions? Well, just a reminder to folks, with it being so hot, if you do have a neighbor that's vulnerable, you know, wouldn't hurt to just chuck up on them, bring them a water, whatever.
And remember the pets, too.
So is there an age limit to the hydrants?
No, no age limits.
I haven't done that in 55 years, so you never know. Thank you very much. Counsel will start on new business, starting with the volunteer appointments and starting with the Planning Commission. Wendy, how are you? Yes, please do.
Thank you for having me.
Counsel Wendy is a new applicant, so she's here to interview before the council for one vacant seat with two years left on a three-year term. Well, welcome, Wendy. Thank you for coming and thank you for volunteering. Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name's Wendy Ducey. I've lived in Berry since 2010. I'm originally from Maine. I grew up there and came to Vermont to go to Norwich. I graduated there 2007, decided to pursue public service, and I've worked for the Agency of Transportation for the past 16 and a half years. Over that time, I've been part of many projects at the agency. I chair our specifications committee, and I'm able to bring people together who have adverse opinions to achieve different projects successfully, most cost efficiently and effectively for the taxpayers. And recently, I've also completed the Vermont Certified Public Manager Program, which is a two-year nationally credited program, so that's a little about me. I like to be busy. I'm a dog mom. Yeah.
Fantastic. Counsel, any questions?
Motion to appoint.
A motion, and there, oop, did you have, you want a second? Thank you. And then you can ask your question.
I will have to take a second and then ask my question.
Go for it.
Thank you for volunteering. I'm curious about, I served on Planning Commission for many years. I'm curious about what about Planning Commission in particular drew you?
I love planning things. I also pride myself on being a solutionist, and I feel with the economic climate, social climate, and all of the hardships, I'd say, the city is facing and the residents, I just feel like I can do a lot of good on that committee.
Fantastic. So softball question, Wendy, because I ask it of everyone. I mean, you've probably attended a few meetings.
I haven't, actually.
You have not?
No.
Okay, that's surprising, because you are a planner, but you do understand, you have a pretty good idea of the time commitment required, and you're prepared to meet that.
Yes, I've researched that, and I've started reading the city plans, so.
Fantastic. Any other questions, Counsel? There is a motion, there is a second? I'm sorry, did you have a question, Nicholas?
I just had a note.
Oh, I'm sorry. Miss you.
So particularly about planning, though, are you most interested in sort of seeing the city revise its plan or just move forward or just, can you talk a little bit more about what your interests are?
Can you repeat that part, revise it or move forward?
Yeah, like, so there's, you know, the Planning Commission, there's plans, and it can revise those plans or move the plans forward, or what part of planning do you think?
Yes, so I think that under the existing plan that was in effect in 2020, it's an eight-year plan, so I think updating that plan is necessary would be best for the city residents because a lot's changed since 2020. So I think understanding what the different needs are of the city and over those changes is important. So I think moving forward is the goal, but also to a better place. So I don't think, you know, just moving forward for the sake of moving forward is a good thing to do. I think it's important to evaluate, like, the current situation of things.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes.
I just wanted to know, Mayor, that Wendy's case is a little bit different because she would be appointed to a vacant term, so her appointment would be effective immediately. A lot of the other terms are beginning July 1, but just flagging that, you'd be on board right away.
Okay.
So on board right away with a little more than two years left?
Yes, correct.
Technically.
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. Hearing no further questions, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Wendy, welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Do good stuff. So Counsel, next is the Police Advisory Committee. Mr. England is the incumbent. He was scheduled to attend but could not be present due to an unforeseen situation. The manager is recommending that the council reappoint Mr. England since he is an incumbent, has served admirably in the words of the manager, and there are no other candidates that he would be displacing. So I would entertain a motion if you're so inclined. Thank you very much. There's a motion and a second from Counsel Stockwell. Any questions? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
Does Mr. England live in Berry City or do we know?
He lives in Berry City.
Okay, just curious.
All those in favor.
I would just add that even with this reappointment, the Police Advisory Committee did have one incumbent who chose not to ask for another term, so the Police Advisory Committee is looking for another member if you are interested.
Thank you for the plug. Any other questions, Counsel? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. Homelessness Task Force, Erica Reel is the incumbent. She is the current Chair of the Task Force. Little bit of an issue with the Task Force, I'll let the manager go into it in terms of the number of members.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor. Erica was the only candidate who applied for one of four seats with expiring terms. The Task Force, even were Erica to be appointed, would not have enough members to conduct business as they could not make a quorum. So I think there's also been, you know, some issues of the focus of the Task Force, and I think it might be a good time for sort of resetting what the Task Force is focused on, what it's doing, and the fact that it can't meet might be a good time to take advantage of that situation.
So what is your recommend? I mean, at this point, we have a task force, even if we reappoint, there are three members. They cannot meet until there is a fourth member. As the manager said, there have been issues with the focus and direction of the Task Force. We can go into those if you'd like to, or we could save them for another evening, but even if we make this appointment, the Task Force, they can't meet without a fourth member. So it might be a good time to table this to another meeting, and if there is another applicant, we could take it up at that time. But I think we also need, the council needs to refocus a bit with the assistance of the manager and the assistance of the members of the Task Force with their direction and purpose. Yes, Counsel Stockwell?
I recommend that we consider asking the All-In Housing Task Force if this, if some of the focus on homelessness might be part of that group.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
To go to the All-In Housing Task Force and say, the homelessness task force of the city doesn't have enough members. However, it remains an issue in the city. Is it something that the council could, is it something the Task Force could consider considering in part or rolling into in some way?
We could.
We could.
Yes, Counsel?
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad idea at all, just to give, I know Counsel Stockwell was here, I think Counsel Sean Bell and Deering were here, too. When this task force first came together, it was meant to be, I wouldn't say meant to be temporary, but thought to be a relatively temporary body, because at that point, we were unsure about the future of the motel program. That was part of COVID. And there was a fear that the program would end en masse, and we'd have a bunch of folks with no plan for what to do with them. So that's how the homelessness task force came to be. So in light of the fact that the motel program still exists in some sort, as well as the fact that we now, ah, speak of the devil, I was just about to say. Now have a member of staff, yeah, go home, Tess. Now have a member of staff focused on this issue as well. My point is, it might make sense for counsel to have a more strategic, larger conversation of, should this remain a task force? Should this now just be a fully fledged committee? Should this be focused solely on homelessness or larger housing security topics? So just a bit of context as we talk about moving forward with what this body may or may not.
Yep, perfect. I mean, what we could do, yes, I'm sorry.
I would just add, I'm not at all opposed to what Counsel Stockwell's suggesting. Logistically, the Housing Task Force is not actually sort of an organ of the city. It's an independent group that meets and contains quite a lot of people who have relevant experience and things like that, but combining those two things would essentially dissolve the homelessness task force as an organ of the city, as a function of the city, which again, is something we could certainly talk about and consider, but I just want to make sure that we all understand what we'd be doing.
It could, but I think it's important, you know, personally, I'd like to, some of the behavior has been really less than productive. And like I said, we can go into it now, not trying to criticize, but, you know, facts are facts, and it's important that I think all committees recognized by the council reflect the views of the council and reflect the direction of the council, and I'm not sure that's happening now. So spoke to the manager about it this afternoon, and I think, I think our consensus, and Nicholas, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we just take a little pause. You know, this is important, homelessness is an important issue, but I think it's also important, I think it's critically important that we have a productive committee working on behalf of the council. Yes?
I don't know what the behavior is, and, but I don't want to discuss it unless people are here to, unless the people who are accused of the behavior have the opportunity to speak about what the behavior was and what the reasons were behind it.
Well, I mean, it's up to the council. Facts are facts. Yes?
If the consensus of the mayor and the managers that we table this conversation for a future date, I'm comfortable with that. We have a lot of things to talk about tonight. I think that could be a useful future conversation.
Okay. And could we have a, actually, I don't know that we really even need necessarily, we just won't add on the reappointment, we don't necessarily need a formal motion to table.
Mayor, if I just, I just want to be sure that, you know, the homelessness work will not, you know, go away just because the committee, the task force is dormant or this is tabled. You know, Tess, as Counsel Wazak mentioned, Tess is, homelessness is in her title, so I just want to assure people that this is not going to mean that there's no work going on with that community or the advocates, the people we work with that serve people who are experiencing homelessness.
Of course. Careful, those chairs aren't new.
Tess Taylor, Home Assistant Housing Liaison for the City of Berry. So I've been in conversations with people, especially Brooke Puleat, who works for the police, and Kristen Bowman at the library, and so right at the, actually, as we speak, we're convening a group of people who are very interested in the homelessness issues that we have. This is, there's a lot, and I love looking at the city's website and what the purview is for the committee. So in the middle of next month, we're going to convene some of the people that are really instrumental in getting the work done on homelessness and people who are interested in it in a way. And this will be one of a few of the topics is maybe reconstituting, reconstituting the committee in a way that reflects what the city has on the website and its purview. So I just wanted to say that, that there's work being done on it.
Okay, thank you.
So you would agree that the council should defer, should have a larger discussion, defer this decision, have a larger discussion at a later date?
Yeah, yeah, and I think, you know, we're talking about the second week in July, so I think after that, we could probably come back with a little report of people's, you know, taking the temperature, people's interest of being, you know, a part of it, if they want to, you know, be considered for a point.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Counsel, if there's no further discussion on this matter, we will move on to the Buildings and Facilities Committee. We have, Counsel, we actually have, this is a rarity, we have four applications for three open seats. Mr. Allen is, Bernie Allen is an incumbent, Paula Dolan is an incumbent, Matthew Flaherty is a new applicant, and Joshua Piasik. And if Joshua, if I destroyed your last name, I sincerely apologize. Thank you so much. Mr. Allen, how are you?
I'm very good. I would like to participate, continue to participate with the Civic Board that I'm now affiliated with. It's something that, born and raised in Berry. I've been, the auditorium has been a big, big part of my life, playing basketball there, coaching basketball there. Sunday nights in the wintertime, we get 50 to 100 kids up there for an hour and a half at Mutua Club and a little bit of the Lions Club sponsors. There's a lot of other things, from the home show that I used to participate with my dad years and years ago at the auditorium to just a lot of different things. This opportunity to make over the auditorium is, I can't believe the opportunity that the city, that the city. the city, that the city has to be able to do this, to be able to make new entrances, new bathrooms, new locker rooms, air conditioning possibly, and making that building be available for and usable for a tremendous amount of new things, things that we haven't been able to use it for. Being up there the last couple, last week for two graduations, that the auditorium was used wonderfully for with a nice, with the rugs down. And speaking of the rugs, the new rug, so to speak, at the BOR is, and the combination of Berry Town and Berry City that have done this together is a wonderful thing. And that's going to make that building more rentable, a lot more rentable for not just soccer and things like that, but there'll be a tremendous amount of things that I think as time goes by, from car shows that you've already had to just a lot of different things that that building will suit itself very well for. And so won't the auditorium once we get some things done that really need to get done. That's the committee that I'm on. That's what I, I have a passion for the auditorium. I have a passion for Berry. I served on the Recreation Board in the town of Berry, as I am a town resident, but I am a Berry City taxpayer, and I have been for a long time, still am. But I was on the Recreation Board in the town for 25 years and, and something that I take a lot of enjoyment of and want to continue. So the Civic Board is something I'd like to continue to participate with, and that's my story.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Yes?
Thank you for coming. And you speak very passionately, but I was wondering if we should do all the candidates and then vote on them? If that would be a better format than?
We can, we can do it any way the council would like to do it. Start out in advance by letting you know, my long-held position on reappointments has been unless there is a reason not to reappoint, I generally honor the work of the folks who have, you know, been doing the work by reappointing them. And that's likely what I will do this evening. Like I said, it's with absolutely no disrespect towards the, towards the new applicants for the remaining positions. But council, how would you like to proceed? It's up to you.
I'd like to hear from all of them. And I share, I share your view that typically I would defer to the incumbents, but.
Thank you.
My good, thank you.
Makes it cleaner.
Bernie, I promise we'll have you about out by 8:30. No, dude, dude, they're going to win the championship tonight.
Thank you.
In Boston.
Paula Dolan is unable, she had a conflict on Mondays. We're meeting on Monday instead of Tuesday, and she has a scheduling conflict with Monday. So she is unable to attend this evening. Manager, I don't know if you want to give us a recommend or just a briefing on this applicant?
Yeah, Paula's been, served very well on the committee as well. I know she's, I think she, and I believe, I don't, hope I'm not speaking, I think her conflict tonight is Kwan is, I know she's an active member of that group as well. So she's, you know, like I said, she's been admirably serving, no issues, very active member of the committee for many years.
Thank you. Mr. Flaherty. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Good.
Why don't we start by just having you introduce yourself and talk a little bit about why you'd like to serve?
Sure, thanks. My story's going to sound a little familiar to a fellow migrant from Maine, I guess. I was born in Maine, 1994. My family has really deep roots in Maine. If you've ever been there, seen DeMillo's Floating Restaurant, my grandfather started that, and just really proud of all my family there. They have really deep roots in like the history of Portland. But I attended Norwich University, studying education and studying Spanish there, played on the lacrosse team. And it was there where I met my now-wife, although she doesn't attend, she didn't attend Norwich. We met there. And, you know, the pandemic happened, and we decided to settle here in Berry. So we bought a house in Berry City, and we've been growing our family here since then. So kind of how I spend my time, I think public service is really important, giving back to the kids of our community and the youth. I am the current boys' lacrosse coach for Spalding High School. I help run a nonprofit called Woodchuck Lacrosse, which provides affordable access to a sport where a lot of kids don't have access to, either through the expensive equipment or through like the unfortunate image that lacrosse has in popular culture. So we do a lot of work in physical education programs, like we go to Berry City School last year and did some PE classes there. So serve on, you know, working with the nonprofit there. And in my nine-to-five job, I work as a government contractor essentially for a program called the Migrant Education Program, which helps migrant farmworkers and their children hopefully obtain a high school diploma. So I'm very familiar with government work. That's kind of my stuff on paper, but in general, you know, I have a daughter at home, a wife at home, and a young, a boy on the way due in August. So really excited about that. And two dogs, so.
Nice.
Yeah, that's me.
And you're from Portland originally?
That's correct.
Portland is one of the greatest urban comeback stories of all time in New England.
That's what my dad will tell you too. He was born there and, you know, he's.
Well, I'm probably your dad's age, so I live in, yeah.
He was born in 64, and yeah, you know, it was a very different city in the 70s and 80s when he was coming of age. It cleaned up a little bit, you know? Oftentimes what happens when it cleans up though is it prices a lot of the locals out. Thankfully, my family, like I said, they have really deep roots there, and they've really invested in the community there. My Uncle Steven is kind of like leading the charge, taking over the restaurant there, but he does a lot of work on a committee for the city there too. So, you know, my family has a really entrepreneurial spirit, certainly, but I know that, you know, we have a deep history of like giving back to the community as well.
Thank you. Questions, council? Yes?
I just, first of all, appreciate all the Maine love tonight. My mother's whole family's from Lewiston, so. I, with your deep passion for giving back to the community and sports and working with kids, I'm curious what drew you to Building and Facilities Committee as opposed to a different committee like Parks and Recreation or something like that?
Yeah. I mean, I think my, you know, my skill set in general, I feel like I can help with, I could be a benefit to, you know, several committees with the city. However, you know, I know what was available tonight, and like there's no better testament to the committee than what I think Mr. Allen just gave. I'm a, I use the BOR facility like on a weekly basis, and will be doing so with our nonprofit, Woodchuck Lacrosse. And just this, the power that, you know, the city has to give back to the community and what I've seen through a purchase like that has been incredible. And hearing about the opportunities that the city has coming up with the odd, you know, I haven't been in Berry for a long time, but I've attended the state finals basketball games, even though I don't have any family, you know, playing in those games, right? It's just like, there's just this incredible history with all these buildings in Berry. If I can be of service to help preserve that history and maybe like take it into the future, you know, I think that's a really exciting thing for me. So, you know, although, yeah, I think, you know, the Parks and Recreation Committee would be great. I think this kind of gives me a chance to maybe have an impact that's like even greater than what I've been doing. So, yeah, I guess that's kind of the answer.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, council? So the softball question, you, you're a busy guy and about to have.
Kind of, yeah.
And when people say two children, really isn't much more work than one. It's not true at all. I'll just prepare you for that. But you do understand, I don't know if you've attended any of the meetings, but I'm sure you understand the time commitment that's involved and how important it is that you meet that commitment.
Yes, of course. Not to make a softball question longer, but I think I have really good, you know, family here. So my mother-in-law, my father-in-law, my sister and brother-in-law, they've helped me so much already, give back to the community with Woodchuck Lacrosse and with Spalding. And, you know, I know that I wouldn't be able to do this without them. So, yeah, I know the commitment, and I'm just thankful that I have the support to be able to do that.
Thank you very much. Were there any other questions, council? No, thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Piasik, am I destroying it?
You got it right two times.
Did I really? Thank you. Welcome. Why don't you have a seat? Introduce yourself, tell us about your interest in the Building and Facilities Committee.
Good evening, everyone. So this is ironic, I'm also from Maine.
What, what's, what happened? All right, what happened in Maine? Seriously.
Okay, you have to say where in Maine.
I grew up in Aruska County. I grew up in Van Buren.
Oh, nice.
Right on the Canadian border.
It is the second best state.
Did New Hampshire post?
Oh.
No, actually, ironically, since I grew up in northern Maine, I grew up in a very large French background. My grandparents spoke French, so when my family actually moved to Berry, it really felt like home. French last names, everybody still speaks French, we're an hour and a half away from Montreal, two hours, whatever, but it really felt like I was back home when we moved here. So much that was actually a stop for us in 2011. I was only supposed to be here for a year. And 2017, we bought a house, and we've lived here for 13 years now, because Berry actually felt like home. So here we are. I have three kids. All three of them went through the school program here, Berry City Elementary and Spalden. Time flies, but my son just finished his sophomore year in college, which is scary because that makes me very, very old. My middle one just got her license, so you guys should probably be scared. And my youngest is a teenager, she's 13. Yeah, that just made me feel really, really old, just to tell you guys that. My wife works over at Woodridge Nursing Home, very proud of her. She was actually the first graduate for the program they put in for the LPN and RN, and she's actually one of the CNCs at night now. So very proud of her. We're now looking to move. Currently, I am working for Vermont Paint in Williston. And I was actually surprised within the last two months. I originally worked for Sherwin-Williams for 13 years. Hearing Mr. Flaherty talk about how much time he puts into the town, I actually was going to take my name out and suggest him as well, because I've become very busy over the last few months. And really, my interest in joining the Auditorium Committee was more trying to be a better community member for Berry City. And it just so happened, the Auditorium Committee popped up, and I said, well, I can either say no and be one of those people that says, just complains about everything and not do anything, or I could actually try to volunteer and offer my service. So in the meantime, although I think Mr. Flaherty would be a better team member, I am more than happy to join another committee that may or may not need my services or, you know, my suggestions.
Well, I'll correct you right there. You are a great team member. So.
Thank you.
So you're a little, little off on that. I can sympathize with the old comment. And you're an incredibly gracious man, and I hope you do, I mean, I, you made it easier for the council to vote, that's for sure, and we appreciate that. But sincerely, I hope you stay involved.
A hundred percent, yes.
You know, because someone who comes here, listens to someone else and says, you know, I think you should pick him, that's exactly the type of selfless attitude that we need on committees, you know, people who recognize the greater good and aren't afraid to say, look, I'll just step back for a minute and let someone else drive.
It's a good problem to have, to have many volunteers, so.
Well.
Hearing about some other committees that, you know, it's a great problem for the auditorium. It's a great building, it's a great centerpiece for our town, and it's nice to see there's so many volunteers.
And, you know, may I call you Joshua?
Yes, absolutely.
Joshua, it wouldn't, it wouldn't surprise me if that committee over the next two years expanded or we had to create subcommittees, because, you know, as everyone's pointing, everyone is pointing out, we're going to have a lot going on in that facility over the next two years. And having people engaged and having people make decisions is going to be incredibly important. So council, any questions? Comments? Yes, sir?
What Councilor Guston mentioned earlier, the Parks and Recreations Committee is only at two members, and if they had one more, they would be able to meet quorum because they're a five-member body. So if you are interested, you could talk to the manager, send him an email, and you'd be a shoe-in with three vacant seats.
You interested?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
I'll be more than happy to talk to you.
You know what, I've heard enough, I've seen enough. I'll make that, I'll ratify next week and make that appointment tonight.
I'm good.
So is there a motion to appoint Mr. Piac to the, yes?
So moved.
Oh, thank you. In a second?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, it's unanimous, welcome aboard.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
So council, that obviously made it, yes, yes, you may.
Thank you. Make a motion to reappoint Bernie Allen and Paula Dolan and appoint Matthew Flaherty to the Buildings and Facilities Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All of those, all those, any discussion, I'm sorry. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. And thank you to all of our applicants and to all of our reappointees. We appreciate you more than you know. And it's way, Bernie, it's way before, it's pregame right now, dude. I got you covered. And you're absolutely welcome to stay, those who are just appointed, you're welcome to stay, we understand if you don't. So it's okay. So council, next on the agenda is the Berry Up update. Shawna, welcome.
I'm from Maine. Most people know I'm from Florida, I can't pull that. No Maine here. I've never even been to Maine, honestly.
Oh, it's a great state.
Vermont satisfies me for New England. I have no desire to go anywhere else. Now I'm just sucking it. All right, good evening, council. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Shawna Trader. I'm here with Prem Linsky, also Tess behind me. We're all a part of Berry Up, more Berry Up people. I think that's everybody. So thank you all for having us. It's been a few months. This is an update for Berry Up. We definitely want to be able to present regular updates for you ongoing. So if you don't mind, we'll hop right into it.
Please.
First few slides are actually on the first update that we did. This is mostly for folks who have not heard of Berry Up or you don't know what we're doing. We are a long-term recovery group. We are a nonprofit. We have just recently obtained our 501(c)(3) status. We were set up by really dedicated citizens and city folk, employees, all kinds of people that came together after the flood and wanted to make a difference in the community. That became a steering committee, and that became Berry Up over time. We are here for you, for the people of Berry, and also if you, if you live or you work in Berry, or if you've been pushed out of Berry because of the flood, we still want you, we still include you in our service net. So it's all about bringing housing back online here, flood-impacted housing, staying connected and working together to become a more resilient Berry. That's what we're all about. Next slide, please. And that's service area, there we go, next slide. And again, I covered that. So again, these first few ones are just on the old update, and that's really for folks that hadn't heard of us yet. So this is a new business, you might say, what's going on right now at Berry Up. Vermont Community Foundation is funding a state. Up. Vermont Community Foundation is funding a statewide software program for all LTRGs to use. It is called Stormwise. That's the name of the consulting company that runs this software and runs training programs all over the country for folks to use. This is an effort to have what we might call a unified disaster recovery solution, as in all of the LTRGs, all of the cities, all of the regions of Vermont, working together. So this software compiles data, and it is, we're really hopeful will lead to, one, illumination as far as what's out there and what's needed, and, two, collaboration across county lines and LTRG lines, so that we can all provide the best recovery services possible for all of Vermonters. So we're really excited about it. If Prem wants to speak up more about it, he can, but everyone that's used the software thinks it's going really well, and we're all grateful to VCF for funding it. And they're also funding an additional training, and they're funding an additional custom build-out for Barry Up. So the consultants of the company are spending a little extra time with the LTRGs to help them build it out a little bit more that suits their needs. And I see some hands.
Couple of questions. Counsel Dearing.
I was just curious, what data that you guys, this is addresses big-picture needs for data. You guys had done a bunch of data collection, and I'm just curious what kind of data is being used, and what kind of data really is being needed?
I think the data for the Stormwise stuff is really just getting off the ground, but what we'll eventually see is like a statewide map, similar to the data that we've collected on small scale here in Barry, but kind of building out to include the whole state. So it'll just be able to, we'll be able to see needs on a state level better than we do now, and I, and we'll be able to communicate and collaborate with other long-term recovery groups that are doing similar work. This will increase our, for instance, our buying power, you know, our leverage, our ability to leverage deals and save costs on materials and labor and stuff like that, by just being able to see each other's work, essentially, and what we're doing, and be able to communicate quicker. Again, this is a part of like a more unified application that we really don't, didn't have at the time of the flood, and we don't have up until now.
Thank you.
So it's like a flexible database, but it also has, it's also going to come with sort of best practices and maybe centralized, here's where you can get materials?
Yeah, there's definitely some best practices, conversations that are still ongoing, data sharing and privacy, for instance, we all know is a hot topic. Those, those kinks are still being worked out, is the short answer of that. More to come. But VCF, Stormwise, and all the LTRGs are a part of that conversation, to figure out how we're going to have meaningful data that's also compliant, et cetera.
That seems great.
Yeah. And we all want it, and just to stress, like, it's always, data privacy has always been a top priority at Barry Up, and, you know, we're not backing away from that. All right. Next slide. Yes, please.
Takes a second. Wiggle the mouse, Nicholas.
It takes a second.
I was kidding.
Wiggle the wrong mouse there. There's two of them.
Wiggle while you work. All right, so this is a little look at kind of our top priorities, our top projects going on right now. As I mentioned, we just got our 501(c)(3) status in the last seven to 10 days. We have reached out to VCF and Common Good Vermont, which was a recommendation from VCF to provide capacity building, organizational ramp-up, you know, learning and education, so that we can take advantage of the fact that we're a 501(c)(3) now, and do, and have the smooth transition, and be ready to roll when the switchover happens. In case, just for context, for people that weren't here, we're currently under a fiscal sponsorship with Green Mountain United Way. So they've been managing our books, et cetera. So the 501(c)(3) is basically Barry Up's opportunity to access and control its own funding, which obviously has a ton of pros. It definitely is a good thing for Barry, but it's a volunteer-run organization, and, you know, we have, like I said, we've reached out for that extra support to make sure it's done the right way. And that, that really has just gotten started, and we're currently in a transition phase. We are still under our fiscal sponsorship agreement. I would expect that to phase out over the next couple of weeks as we ramp up. We are working on our allocations process. This has a lot to do with limited funding, explicitly around material supplies, and like specialty contractors, for instance. You know, we are, we, a big bulk of our funding is from VCF. We have great funding from Vermont's Episcopal Church, Catholic Charities. Several groups have stepped forward, and several faith groups as well. So, but that money is limited, and if, I'm sure everyone here knows, materials costs are out, off the chain right now. That's no exception for us. We are working on a few things to increase our buying power, as previously mentioned. But the short story is that Barry Up is working on an allocations process to make sure that we can serve everyone the best that we can. And we're doing a good job as it is right now, but construction is ramping up. The speed, the pace at which we're getting into homes and repairing them is ramping up. We also know that there are still people in Barry City that have not heard of Barry Up. That's a shame. We're here for you. If you're out there and you can hear us, we are here for you. We want to help you get your house restored, back to the way it was before the flood. All of the little nooks and crannies and pieces of the puzzle, we know how complicated they are, and we're here for you. So Barry Up exists. We have a webpage, we have a newsletter. I'll show all this stuff at the end on how to contact us, but, you know, we're here for you, we want to hear from you. And if you've had our services, we've had a lot of happy people out there, a lot of happy residents, let your neighbors know, and spread the word that you have your own long-term recovery group right here in Barry City, and we're working hard for you. The construction program is going phenomenal. I'm sure you all want to hear a little bit more about that, so I'll let Prem get on the mic, but it has, it's going swimmingly. It is going according to our predictions as far as ramp up and demand. Everything, all the pieces are kind of falling into place in that respect. We're having great results with our Resource Youth Build teams. I was out on a job site just last week and thanked the youngsters who were working on the properties for the work that they were doing for the people of Barry, and their response was, thank you for giving us this opportunity to learn these skills and prepare for the workforce like this. So that's pretty special. So this is, this is a big community project, and the Resource Youth Build part of it really adds in like a workforce development and a youth development aspect to it, which is really, I'm really proud of. And then the last goal is to continue the work that we're doing with VCF and the Stormwise and the other LTRGs, because one of the obstacles, and there's a slide later for challenges that we've encountered, but one of them has been the fragmented nature of the disaster recovery response. And it's become, it becomes more clear over time that Vermonters are going to be better served by a more unified approach to this. So in our own little ways, as we advance, and when I say we, I mean all the LTRGs, we are learning that and figuring out how we can interact with each other and improve our services. Prem, do you have anything to add about the construction program?
It's going great. I mean, it started off very slow. I think the winter time, everybody just kind of buttoned up for the winter, kind of kept their head down, and then spring started to come, and we slowly started to hear from people, but it really took us getting a few jobs done, for people to talk and hear that we were doing, for Green Up Day, doing like debris removal. There's still tons of flood debris in people's basements, a lot of mold still kicking around. I think a lot of people just didn't go look at it all winter, and they didn't want to let somebody else in their house. Like, if you've got your house worked on, you know what it's like to have volunteer group after volunteer group come in. In some cases, people had to redo work that they did. Initially, people were just a little weary about letting somebody new come in and do the work, but as we start to go in, as we start to get the work done, we picked up one house, and then all the neighbors called us. And then I started going into their house, and I was like, what made you call now? And they're like, I saw awesome work being done, and I knew there was somebody I could trust. And that's really awesome. It feels really good. And, and just to have like resource in the community, they've been here for a long time. Youth Build's been here for probably 15 years or something like that. They're just like, could not do this without Resource Youth Build. Like, couldn't do it. There's no contractors that are going to pick up this type of work and help us out in such a short window of the construction season. And I just want to make sure that that's like, like, just know, like, they're such an asset to this community, and they're the people that are, are going to train up the youth to, to do contract work in the future, to do trades, which we're struggling with in this state. So it's going great. I'm super excited. It's, every day I get messages from homeowners that are just like, you did what you said you were going to do, in timely fashion, and it's nice to have somebody we can trust.
Yes.
What's your capacity like? Like, are you doing like a house at a time? Do you have capacity to do more than a house at a time?
We have the capa, I mean, we're doing two houses right now. We've got a few that we go and do pieces and parts of as permits come in. I mean, the permit process has been slow for some people. It's daunting. I have houses that are ready to go once that gets in. It's mostly just needing the homeowner to get some stuff done. There are three Resource Youth Build teams that we could pull from through the summer, and we're using two right now. So as things start to ramp up, we'll be able to work on more houses.
So capacity in terms of having skilled labor isn't the issue, but, but permitting and perhaps materials are an issue?
Resident readiness is part of that as well. I mean, it's a, I think the, it can be a daunting process to walk in and do the permit and not know what's going to come out of it. We are very soon going to be maxed out on our construction crews. Like, easily, within a week or two, I'm going to have every crew working and more need. So we will hit that pretty soon. And materials, yeah, materials aren't cheap. I mean, thank God for Pam, who's a volunteer with Barry Up. Like, I go and go and tell her, like, I need this much money to work with the homeowner to come up with grant funding for it, because otherwise I would just have to go buy stuff, and like, I would run out of the money that we've had donated very, very quickly. And it does slow things down. There are some times where it's like, we're going to have to come back when we can come up with money to finish this project.
And you can't really work with a, with a, with a tech center because they can't go off-site? Because of insurance reasons, like the...
That was a conversation that was had before I came on. I'm not sure of the exact reasons.
Thank you.
So you'll be, you'll be at capacity in a week or two? Is that what I heard you say, for the most part? And then how long will you, how many projects will you have in the queue, if we think about months? How many months of projects would, would you have in the queue?
Yeah, I'd say come November, at the beginning of November, we're going to hit a time where construction's kind of going to dwindle, and I'm really hoping to have projects running through then. And I currently don't have them all lined up, but as I said, it's like, as, I feel like every day, it's like two new people call and are looking for help, you know? And, and it's just like a process with each one, but I'm hoping, I have one team that's like, they are going to be working for us through November, December. Like, I will have enough work. And, and, yeah, I'm hope, we're like, looking into other alternative ways to bring more teams on to do more work. But I could see easily three teams going for the next several months.
And what percentage of the projects do you think are mitigation versus repair?
We're mostly doing repair. There are some mitigation efforts that we're doing, but I think a lot more of the funding we're getting is focused more on repair.
Gotcha.
It would be great if we could do more mitigation work.
And, you know, there is an opportunity, I don't know if either of you had the opportunity to watch the council meeting last week. Wouldn't blame you if you didn't. But there's Vermont Emergency Management Grants available, and there are funds available for residential owners and commercial owners for mitigation. So I don't know if that, that might help. So the city council was talking about how we get the word out, to let commercial property owners, residential property owners know that in, there's a possibility, worst-case scenario is a 20% match. So literally, if you have $50,000 worth of mitigation work to do, it could cost you 10. That's the worst-case scenario. Best-case scenario, there is no match. It's covered 100%. So I just wanted to make the two of you aware of that. If you go to the Vermont Emergency Management page, you know, $90 million up for grabs. You're welcome.
Yeah, and I would say if there's residents out there, the same rules apply. If you reach out to Barry Up, like Prem said, Pam Wilson is a genius. She's, you know, she's well-versed in the grants and opportunities out there, and she is, she's a phenomenal connection to have. She'd be happy to help steer you in the right direction, or at least point out the resources for you.
And counsel, I don't know if you were all copied on Pat's response, but we actually can bulk an application. So we can submit numerous properties under one application for these emergency management grants. So I'm sure we'll be talking about that. Of course.
I, well, first of all, I appreciate that you're doing this and all of the work. I love the presentation. My question is specifically about numbers and data, and this isn't a, I, I guess I'm going to be a broken record sitting here, because I'd like to know some, all of this is great information, but do you have data that tracks, you know, how many projects you've completed? As you're saying, you have these in the queue. Would you be willing and able to share that the next time that you come to the council, so that we could see, you know, how many people you have served, how many families you've served, in what ways? That would be great.
Yeah. And I would say as a good foundation, so, excuse me, Counselor Spalding, that our first presentation that we did last time was our six-month, and we did include, you know, hard numbers about how many jobs we serviced, et cetera. So that'd be a good start, and then, yeah, for next time, we can have some numbers for you as well.
Perfect, thank you.
The, the pace has picked up so much that it's been hard to keep it all under, you know, figure it all out as it's happening, but suffice it to say, the work's getting done, and we're super happy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Next slide. So Prem mentioned that we did some Green Up Day work. We had, you know, we have great funding that allowed us to pay for some debris removal, and we used it to purchase a special roll-off dumpster for flood debris, which was filled up in 24 hours. We had reached out to families that we knew had flood debris. As Prem mentioned, there is a lot still out there. It absolutely needs to be a priority to remove. We do have pathways to get it done. Agency of Transportation, just a name drop, is one group that's helping us get it out of here. It's important to remove the thorn before you try to begin the healing process.
Are there, sorry, are there particular areas that are particularly bad, or is it just a citywide?
I would say the hotspots that we all know, the ground zeros that we're all aware of, are still our hotspots for debris removal. So in general, the North End, around Courier Park, et cetera. You know, Scampini, Vine Street, all those places that we know were hit, Brooklyn Street, et cetera. Yeah. And we, you know, we are going to, we had initially planned on purchasing a lot of dumpsters and doing it that way, but the Agency of Transportation has stepped up, and they're actually going to be helping us do pro bono debris removal. So now it's just a matter of coordinating with residents to get the debris out to the street side, the curb side, so that AOT can come through and pick it up. Yes?
So I, I guess that's part of my question. The debris is, as you were saying, in the house? Sometimes it's just sort of like, okay, we're going to shut the door to the basement and not think about it for the winter, and so there's still a lot of things that need to be brought up, and...
Yeah, a lot of it's still in the house.
Yeah. So you're driving down the street, you're not necessarily going to know?
Sometimes, like in the area in North End, where Prem was saying, we've got a, you know, a little block going of houses that we're working on. a little block going of houses that we're working on. You'll see some piles outside. It's waiting for pickup. But there are still plenty of homes out there with, I mean, I hate to say, but even soft goods, you know, that are still in the basement, that are still inhibiting the process of recovery.
And certain times people thought like, this, this will be fine. This got wet, but I think it'll be fine.
So we do have, I mentioned, we have a challenge slide coming up. And Prem mentioned resident readiness. That is absolutely a factor here as far as getting debris out of your house. The bottom line is that there are just residents who are ready at different speeds to, to get it out of their home. And you can imagine that's a difficult process when we've all lost so much. Is this a little before and after? We've actually, you know, me and-
I had a quick question from Councilor Dearing.
Did I had a question regarding the AOT removal of debris. Is there any way that we can coordinate that with the city somehow? So we can get kind of the most bang for the buck? I mean, if they're gonna remove it for nothing and we have lots of residents that are looking to get rid of that debris, is there any way that we can kind of put that through our messaging system or some kind of messaging system? Get it to the residents so that way they're not having to burden that cost?
Yeah, and I can address that, Councilor, if I may. So we've, we've been coordinating with Berry Up on this. I think the, the purpose of this debris pickup is very flood specific. This is not like spring cleaning debris pickup. So, so I think we're, we're sort of trusting that Berry Up's has the, the pulse on the people who are still in that recovery mode. So yes, I, the, the answer is yes, we're coordinating. The reason it's not, it's not on our social media website is because it's not for like someone like me to just get my, my stuff out. It's, it's only flood related, so is that, and that's-
Yeah, absolutely.
You could post to put it out there to people and have them go through us. I think that would be the biggest thing is that I, I mean, this little block of houses we got, one person heard about the dumpster we had for Green Up Day for flood stuff. And now we got into their house and we've been working there for three weeks. They hadn't come out, they hadn't talked to us, you know, they had heard about us. But, you know, we would love to learn about new clients this way. People that are like, oh, I have some, I had a flood come through my house, damaged a bunch of stuff. I'm ready to throw it out. We need to get to those people and find-
Sure, and then you guys could essentially go to the house, check it out. You know, maybe that's a way that you guys could get into the house in a friendly way. And then the debris gets removed. You guys are also able to kind of assess the situation. And everybody gets helped out in the same process.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. So like Prem said, I would just think about debris removal as a job. So send them to Berry Up. It gets booked as a job. Prem goes and does a site visit. We figure it out. We coordinate it, you know, with the teams and everything to get it out.
Thank you. And it helps queue up the projects. I mean, when you have to empty a building in order to build, the skill level required to empty a building is different than the skill level required to rebuild. So, yeah, great idea.
Yeah, and removing debris.
I think folks would be pretty cool about it. I mean, you might get a few where, you know, you, the AOT, the B Trans guys come along. And it's like, dude, those are last year's tires. That's all they are. It's not flood debris. But I, I really, I, I have a lot of faith that our residents won't try to take advantage of that free pickup and confuse it with spring cleaning.
In some cases, people's tires washed down the street into somebody else's backyard. We're seeing a lot of stuff. People are like, this isn't even my stuff.
True, there's a lot of stuff in people's property that's not even their stuff because of the water. And if we had to purchase more special roll-off dumpsters, we could do that. We have a certain amount of funding that is dedicated towards debris removal. So that's a thing. We're just trying to save every dollar we can so that we can maximize what we're doing.
Sure.
All right, next slide, please. This is another Green Up Day slide. Adam Jacobs, thank you over there. You know him. He, he, you know, coordinated a group of fifth graders doing Green Up Day work. So that's what you see there. That's amazing. We love that. Hashtag love you Berry. Great little city we have. Next slide. We've kind of just talked about this. That's an image of our dumpster probably after like six hours. And this is really just talking about the AOT collaboration that's happening. And that, you know, you should reach out to Berry Up even if the only thing you need done in your house is to remove debris. That's still appropriate to contact Berry Up. Next slide, please. Case management. So Pam Wilson, you all know her. She is our case management genius. It is not easy work. She's doing it as volunteer. It became obvious that Berry Up needed to have some case management support. So we are looking for folks that, Berry Up's looking for volunteers in general. But we're looking for people in the community that are willing to step up and volunteer and help. This is, this process requires a lot of handholding and education. And it's not easy work, especially unpaid when we're all trying to live our lives and have our other obligations. But the need has not gone away. I would say the, the pressure and the focus has shifted towards construction in the season that we're in. And so we're getting a lot of work done that way. Whereas in the winter, it was less construction and more case management. So there's a nice inhale and exhale happening here season wise. We can expect this long-term recovery to continue into the next year. And essentially in the non-construction periods of time, we can expect increase to our case management load. And then the opposite is true in the summertime. So the, there's always gonna be a need. As I mentioned earlier, like even if it's just helping people access the funds to pay for the recovery, that alone requires a lot of assistance. Next slide. So we kind of already talked about the construction program. I think we've kind of covered all of this. Prem, do you have anything to add that is not on the slide or that wasn't already discussed? We did have one success that we're taking. We had a resident remove their name from the buyout list after getting help from Berry Up and realizing that they could stay in their home and they, they wanted to stay in their home. And they took their name off the buyout list. So we're gonna take that as a victory. Next slide. This is some, we have a couple shots of our Resource Youth Build team coming up. Here we are in a basement. This is a great example of a home that was flooded in Irene. And this homeowner would say, you can see the line on the wall, right, where Irene was? There's no line on the wall for the flood that happened last year because it wasn't on the wall. It was in the rafters. So that's what we've seen this year. Next, yes.
So when you're replacing a window like that, do you replace it with something that's more flood resistant?
In this case, they wanted the same window put back in. In some cases, windows are completely shattered out. But they wanted a window and they passed wood through the window into their basement. So they wanted that same window. We just fixed the, the wood around it that was rotting out and everything. And it's actually in some cases good because they can open the window if the basement's flooding and let water out before it goes up too high. But they, we, we're, we try to be as resident centered as possible. We are only resident centered. So it's like they tell us what they want. That's what they wanted. Like they, and that's where we started, you know? And then as, as they're ready for more work, we'll, we'll go from there. But in some cases, we've just boarded over windows because somebody's like, not putting windows in again. They broke last time. Like let's just board it up. Let's insulate it. Get some nice trim, paint it, make it look nice, but I don't need windows there anymore.
Okay, thank you.
From a theoretical perspective, very theoretical, could this team you have with Youth Build do new construction?
Very talented. They have excellent instructors and motivated youth and trainees. And the instructors have years of experience. Like in some cases, twenty or thirty years of experience in the trade. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just reiterate, Prem hit the nail on the head. But a good rule of thumb is that Berry Up is resident centered. So that's, that's our focus.
Prem hit the nail on the head. I saw what you did there.
He's consistent with his work. All right, next slide, please. These are great kids. Like I said, they are like actually happy to be working in Berry City. They're grateful for the training and they're having a good time. So it was super awesome to hear that. So this goes back to one of our projects. We really, we, we need to, we need people to know that we're out here. We're still doing all the same things we've done since the beginning. We're doing logistical support, emotional support, teaching self-advocacy, facilitating accessibility. Yeah, it's pretty impressive what we do. We have a shift in our office and in our open hours. We've, we're actually tabling at Berry Farmer's Markets right now. That I think is a great way to reach the community. We are looking for volunteers. Again, we're looking for volunteers for anything. But we would love to have some volunteers to table at the Farmer's Market to expose folks to what Berry Up's doing. The collaboration between the city and Berry Up is ongoing. Next slide, please. So here's our challenges slide I was talking about, the capacity building, which I mentioned we're getting support on. Part of that is just because it's volunteer run. We don't have a paid staff that can do the administrative stuff, that can do the organizational on-ramp stuff. So that's difficult. Part of it is also just a lack of expertise and needing that extra little guidance for the complexities of this work in order to not have any disruption to our services. Another challenge is engagement and a lack of safety net. So I've made a nice little equation here for everyone. This is a lesson we've learned since the flood, for me personally at least. Maybe other people knew it, but engagement equals need times trust times safety. People have to have a need. They have to trust that you can address it. And they have to also feel safe in reaching out. The lack of a safety net is a problem. There is no other housing for people to go to, for instance. So if you need to vacate your home for two months for work, that doesn't exist. If you're afraid that you are going to get condemned and forced out of your home, that can slow down engagement. So the lack of other housing units or other options, other spaces for people to go, drives down engagement. And interface challenges in bureaucracy. So we all know that's, that's how it works. This is how the game works, right? It's just like that. Every level of governments, like state and feds, it slows down. There's so much help out there, but at each one, there's an interface that has to happen and it has to be effective and efficient. And the bottom line is that everyone's having staffing problems. Everyone has turnover. And these roles and these supportive organizations where LTRGs interface with them, if that role changes, it's, can, it can set the clock back. It's like hitting the reset button. That, that role no longer knows all the connections, all the resources, et cetera. So those, that's slowed us down a little bit. We've had to internalize a lot of that knowledge and wisdom and make our, make ourselves really effective and really knowledgeable at, at getting around all those systems. Oftentimes because we, we don't want to wait for the other organizations to catch up. We gotta, we have to figure it out ourselves. Any questions about the challenges? Great. Lessons learned. Resident readiness is long-term recovery. We've said this already, but it's probably number one thing. If the people aren't ready to do it, it just ain't gonna happen. And there's so many factors that feed into that, getting to that moment. Part of that is building relationship and establishing trust, which we've done a fantastic job at. But there's all other, all kinds of other reasons too. Many of them we've already talked about. Becoming flood savvy community takes time. I just keep hearing that it's called long-term recovery for a reason. It takes a long time. And part of that is resident readiness. And part of that is response for all the other organizations and mobilizing dollars, et cetera. So it just takes time. Another important lesson, and we can't stress this enough, is that this last flooding was not Irene in Vermont, ain't Texas. So another way that a resident put it to me is that storm that caused five inches of rain last year is not gonna be the same as a storm that causes three inches of rain this year. So we may think the total number of rainfall is less or it's going to be less of a disaster. But we know from the way the water works and the way the flood works, that doesn't matter. It can be less water and it can still cause more damage. It all depends on the context and all the other factors that go into that. So it's something we need to consider as far as disaster planning and preparedness goes. If we're predicted to get six inches of rain, for instance, it doesn't necessarily mean that, yeah, that's fine. It's not gonna be as bad as the eight inches we got five years ago. Don't sleep on it because it sneaks up on you. And good things take time and patience. That's just a lesson for life, right? All right, next slide, please. So we saw this last time. We really love this chart. Everyone knows we're coming up on our one-year anniversary of the flood. Just before the, or just around the time of the anniversary, there's usually a dip. There's a dip in, in morale and, and speed. People look around and they say, what's been done? Or why hasn't anything been done? Or why hasn't enough been done? That's pretty typical. But the pace is picking up. The pieces are coming together. There's, there's a coalescence happening. And we do expect an upward trend following the anniversary simply because that time has elapsed and all of that energy is starting to, to coalesce and work towards a common goal. So keep your head up, folks. I know the anniversary's coming up. It seems like it's just the tip of the iceberg that we're working on. But the speed at our recovery will increase exponentially now that we have that knowledge and are able to mobilize that much quicker. Time to Berry Up. That's where the name comes from. If you've got something hard and difficult going on in your life, welcome to Berry. It's time to Berry Up. We're gonna make it. Aniversaries are complicated. Recovery is not linear. Okay, we've talked about this a little bit. So a little bit about resi- resident readiness. You just don't know. There's way too many factors, social, economic, that filter into all this kind of stuff. Take care of yourselves and each other as the anniversary nears. Stay, stay connected and work together. That's one of Berry Up's mottos. Thank you. Next slide. There it is. Get support, give support, gather in community. Next slide, please. Berry Up model. Here's a little bit about our contact. We still have a phone number. You can leave a voicemail. There's an email. There's a new Facebook group on Facebook, obviously. Please check it out. If you're on the old Berry Up page or a group, please switch over to the page. It gives us a lot more functionality. We're getting a lot more information out there to the people. There is a web address. There is a sign up for a newsletter. And we do hope to see you at the Berry Farmer's Markets all throughout the summer. We even had our, an open air board meeting there a couple of weeks ago. You know, this is all about community and volunteer run. So we don't have any secrets and we want everyone in the community to see what we're doing. And if you have the bandwidth to do it, join us. We need you. Is that the end of it?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't get around to the slide for this one, but if I could just say, we are, in addition to doing all this work, we are thinking about what's next. I cannot, we are watching the intersection of extreme heat and houselessness. Please do what you can to make sure our people are prepared to handle this. I, I know Nicholas mentioned earlier the hydrants, so I know we're getting creative. Let's stay creative. Let's stay thinking about it. Because it is by evidenced already this year, it's going to be a hot summer. And we have a lot of people outdoors and without access to things. We're thinking about, because of the heat, we're thinking about air quality. We all remember the fires and the smoke that happened last year at the same time as the floods. We're dealing with mold and smoke inhalation stuff. Think about respiratory health. Because of the heat, we're worried about food safety, cyanobacteria blooms. Everything that is related to an increase in heat and a decrease in- resources, um, those are gonna be things. So even like wound care, for instance, for our people, we're thinking about, you're outside, it's incredibly hot. There's going to be, um, wounds that need taking care of. And of course, um, it should just be known by now, this is something that should be on our radar, has been for years and will continue to be the mental health impact of the flood. And again, the intersectionality of being houseless and exposed to the elements. There is a chronic need to, for cities and states and nation to be concerned for mental health and doing all we can to support our people out there.
Thank you. Questions? Yes?
So I have a couple of general questions. How is the work that Berry Up is doing right now comparing to other LTRGs across the state?
We are definitely a few steps ahead of other LTRGs for several different reasons. But, um, we've definitely taken on like a mentorship role. Pam has been great at talking to other LTRGs about things that we're doing well, that they're just starting to, to face. We're doing construction. We have multiple teams working in the city. Some other LTRGs are working on maybe one site a month. They're, they're slowly starting to like re-engage their community because it was just, it was a long winter. A lot of these, a lot of these LTRGs are, are completely volunteer run. The people who, I mean, this work is hard. It's taxing. Secondary traumatic stress syndrome is real. So a lot of people who started just had to step away. So it's, um, it's, it's difficult work. So we're a few steps ahead, which feels really good. It's nice to have people come to us and ask about how we're, how we're moving along so, so well.
We had a good start. And it's paid off well, the work that was done in the early days, the commitment, the passion, the drive of the people that responded in the beginning. It really paid off. Um, a lot of great groundwork was laid and we've just been also very right-sized. We've been very concerned with being right-sized. Small but mighty is another way that I think about it. By being contained and continuing to do what we do well, we've been able to maintain that and grow at a pace that made sense for the org and is now paying off as far as our capacity in the community.
Is there a peer group, Shauna, like for the long-term recovery groups around the state? Is there some sort of peer group or, I always hate the word association. Too structured, but is this just a peer group where groups can share best practices and groups can say, hey, we're struggling in this regard and, well, here, here's our playbook. It might help you.
Absolutely. And in the beginning, it was a lot of the orgs that were set up in Irene, like Waterbury, for instance, that were doing that to, to us and to others. And now that the, the new cohort of LTRGs is out on the playing field. Yes, absolutely. There is several meetings a week. We kind of divide them up, you know, Prim will go to one, Pam will go to one, I'll go to one. But yes, there is a meeting of the cohort of the LTRGs. And even that has had its challenges. When you say that Vermont ain't Texas, we could also say that Burlington ain't Berry, you know? The, the fun part about Vermont is everywhere you go, it's something different, you know? So even amongst the LTRGs, um, there's, has been some friction. But, um, everyone knows what we're here for and everyone's just really passionate about it. As the case is sometimes in politics, we secretly all have the same goal. And maybe we just don't agree on how to get there or whatever, but we all know what we want is best for the people.
Sure. And if someone, do you have a referral, an intake form that someone can fill out or do they, on your webpage or do they?
We absolutely have an intake form and we have just a really simple, type in your name and your email and Prim will reach out to you and Pam will reach out to you. So it, it doesn't even have to be a big form at first. The most important thing is that we have your name, your phone number or your email. The team gets right on.
Gotcha. So if councillor or mayor, so I'm doing a constituent visit tomorrow.
Yeah.
With some of the city staff, uh, you know, people call, you go. That's the way it works. So can we make a referral that like through the intake form and then let you know that it's not necessarily the resident, um, making the referral, but we believe they would benefit from speaking with you?
I think the intake thing is so simple that it really is just name, phone number or email. And like an optional section for notes or something.
Right.
I think that's the case. You could write that, I guess, yeah. I mean, either way, we're gonna be reaching out to the resident and, you know, verifying that they wanna have our services, et cetera.
And I can follow up with an email as well?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. And we have flyers and stuff too. If anyone on council wants to have a stack of flyers to hand out to constituents, uh, we're happy to do that too. It has, you know, a nice little QR code that connects you right to the intake form or signs you up for the newsletter, et cetera. So yeah, we have that available.
Thank you. Questions, counsel? Yes?
Sure. As you've probably seen, uh, an agenda item coming up for us in a, a conversation over the last couple of weeks here at council has been building out plans for flood resiliency for the city. Are there any observations that you have made in your work to date that you feel strongly should be incorporated into that planning?
For mentioning that because I'm thinking of the Peter Anthony Bridge, the trestle project. We know that was identified as a task that needs to be done for flood resiliency in the future. Um, and I, I haven't kept up with what y'all are doing, but that's a big one. And I think that probably we could have a whole session, uh, and to answer that question, councillor Augustine. Yeah. But kind of what we talked about here in lessons learned is, is the important stuff.
Thank you.
Yes?
You talked about community outreach and I apologize if you've already given this at another time before I was here. Do you, I imagine you're connected with other organizations like Capstone or that sort of thing. But I wonder about, um, an organization that Ms. Mayor Lozon and I were, um, a part of the Berry community really fund. And I wonder if it would be helpful, because we're very also small but mighty group, if it would be helpful to outreach to people who've received grants, because those are people who obviously have been impacted. And if they know about Berry Up, it might be just a way to spread the word to people who we know were impacted in some way, shape or form by the flood. Even just a simple email that says, hey, go to this page if you need help. Yeah. And it's, but they're Berry City and Berry Town residents. That was the criteria. So, um, are you primarily serving Berry City?
Primarily, yes. If you're not able to filter your email list, then yeah, you would wanna say that in the email.
Think we could.
I think we might be able to do it, but I, I just wonder if that would be helpful.
It, it will likely have flaws, so we'll apologize in advance. But I think we can, I think we could get it like ninety percent good.
I could send you a PDF version of the flyer I just mentioned, so that you could attach it to the email.
Especially as we're coming up on the anniversary and people are maybe still very frustrated and, and feeling worn out and don't know where to go for help. It might be a great way to say, you know, here's an organization that wants to help you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much. You're doing a lot of good work and, um, you know, we really do appreciate it. One thing that you said resonated with me, how do you eat an elephant?
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, as you, and one of the things we'll be talking about is, you know, flood mitigation and prioritizing. And it's occurred to me over the last year, just how much work there is to be done. But it's also occurred to me how much work we have done. You know, we've helped, but as you said, recovery is gonna be very long-term. I won't be sitting here when the last of the flood mitigation, I don't think any of us will be sitting here when the last of the flood mitigation projects get done. My biggest concern is simply that we put ourselves in a position to take advantage of every opportunity. Because right now there is so much money up for grabs. So I'd encourage you to, you know, go to the Vermont Emergency Management Page, because nonprofit organizations and congratulations, it's a big deal. Uh, you know, they can apply, in fact, for some of those funds. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Both of you.
In case you didn't read it.
Prim, I will, I'll see you at one of those job sites one of these days. Nothing better than a job site. See things getting done.
Yeah, you gotta get in the nitty gritty. And in case you missed it, you eat an elephant one bite at a time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Counselor, we're at item HC on the agenda. This is ARPA. Next steps. Manager supplemented his, uh, outline this evening with a PowerPoint, uh, update that he sent to the council this afternoon. You should have all had that in your inbox. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah.
Before you start, can I just ask a question? For people in the audience here in the room, can you see those screens? Okay, I just wanna make sure you can follow along, cuz they're facing towards us, but I don't know if you can see them, so just wanna be cognizant.
I didn't wear my glasses today.
Okay, so does it matter whether we, you can see it or not? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. General impressions.
So thank you. Yeah, I, I thought it'd be good to have a visual. This is all content that was in the memo, but something to sort of guide the conversation and we can have up on the screen for those, uh, in the room and at home. So just the background and sort of the decision discussion that's, uh, we're looking for tonight. Uh, ARPA established a state and local fiscal recovery fund. States got a bunch of money and then, uh, that money, Vermont's 1.25 billion dollar share was, um, of the, of that money, 200 million was spread out along, amongst communities based on $300 or so per Vermonter. So we, uh, Berry City received 2.5 million. And, uh, what we're looking for tonight, um, on the staff level is sort of decision, direction and really consensus from the council about, um, the principles for how we allocate the remaining, um, ARPA funds. And so let's get to what the remaining ARPA funds are. These are the allocations to date. So the council has either approved or committed to the following uses of ARPA. Um, and you can see the chart here that has, whether it's been approved or committed and the amount. So the, the biggest dollar item, um, was $355,000 to reline the sewer along North Main Street. This was to, uh, save some infrastructure that, um, was, we knew was in poor shape, but was, uh, really confirmed after some assessments done after the flood. And if we lost that line of sewer, that would be a big problem. That serves North Berry Manor. So we're doing some sewer lining there that will extend the life of that, uh, line. Perhaps indefinitely, but certainly for, for a long term. The council also approved $250,000 to, uh, the Downstreet Granite City Apartments Project at the Ward Five School. Uh, this is a, a small amount of their whole project budget, but really allowed them to complete, uh, their funding for that project. The council has committed, uh, but hasn't formally approved $250,000 for the creation of a housing revolving loan or trust fund. Uh, and just a note there that, um, the council directed the Housing Task Force with TESS, uh, to, and Downstreet to, um, to sort of come up with some parameters and they're looking to be here on, at the July 2nd meeting, uh, to present the work that they've been doing, uh, for council's approval. The council has, and this is a placeholder, the next item, sort of committed broadly to just project management, grant writing capacity. Uh, this is just a placeholder for two years of a position with salary and benefits. Don't know if that's gonna be the amount, but just thought it was, since council's talked about it, just prudent to make sure that we accounted for it. As we talk about, uh, the principles moving forward. Also approved $55,000, uh, for the Berry Opera House exterior lighting project and settlement. And that's, that's well underway.
You know, I, last week at the meeting, I forgot to mention Karen, she's on the Opera House Board. She wanted me to mention it last week's meeting, I forgot, that when our meeting adjourned at 8:30, they were actually doing a demo.
Yeah, they were.
Out on City Hall. I'm sorry. I forgot to tell y'all.
It was very cool.
I'm sorry.
We provided some assistance with the tower truck and it looked very cool, what they were doing up there. And that's, yeah, so that's coming along really well. Uh, that'll be a nice addition to the downtown. And then, uh, we also, uh, the council also approved, uh, close to $30,000 as a zero interest loan to Central Vermont Habitat. That was for the demolition of 22 Hill Street. That will be, just to note, that'll be repaid by Habitat, uh, over time. But we provided them the loan to allow that project to continue and to build a new, a new home in that site. Uh, and then there's, this is sort of a, a, an allocation of smaller buckets, $52,000 and sort of some operational, smaller expenditures bundled up. This included PD payroll and FICA during COVID. Uh, the initial, the first warming shelter was funded out of ARPA. It's now built into the budget. As you may remember, we had a community outreach process for ARPA when we were gonna do the Innovation Fund and we paid for that out of this as well. And then also, this is tentative, but the council approved the Bike Share, uh, Loan Program Match. We discussed, this may come out of ARPA, this may come out of other trust funds. We may not even need to pay it, but we just want to account for it just in case. So that leaves approximately, uh, 1.4 million, um, that is unallocated or, uh, otherwise not committed to any projects. So here we get into the, the legalese of it all. What does allocate, uh, mean? So, um, there was, and you may all remember that there was sort of this, uh, standard allowance, standard deduction, whatever you wanna call it, for ARPA, um, when it was established. And that basically allowed governments to count ARPA funding as lost revenue under $10 million. So we fit under that threshold and the council took that action. So you can see there's an excerpt from the, uh, April 12th, 2022 council memo where, uh, that action was approved. So coun- council and the city already did that standard, um, allowance, which, uh, essentially allows us to, to say that we spent the money. There is some VLCT guidance we've received, um, more recently, because the general timeframes for ARPA, as, as we've been sharing, are that it must be allocated by December 31st, 2024 and the money must be spent by December 31st, 2026. So the guidance we have recently received within the last couple of months is that just transferring ARPA, I'm reading from the highlighted section, that just transferring ARPA funds into a general fund does not meet the definition. So it, it really needs to be a more specific allocation of the money to a specific project, even if it's not expended until 2026. So we have some, um, you know, if we have to come up with allocations by the end of this calendar year, we have some, some recommendations on the staff level, on some, some guiding principles of how, um, you know, we think the ARPA funding could be allocated. The first there is sort of a broad category of critical deferred maintenance, um, of revenue generating facilities. And, and first in line here is the BOR. So the idea here is to ensure that facilities that, um, you know, serve a key community function that also generate revenue for the city, that's non-tax revenues, are operational and good, in good standing and that we're replacing end-of-life systems. So at the BOR, the roof is a problem. There are some, uh, air handlers connected to the ice that's a problem. So we would look to, um, making some investments here, uh, out of this ARPA money, knowing that those are critical systems that need to be replaced and knowing that having a functioning BOR is very important. Not just recreationally and as a community center, but it also generates revenue for the city. Sort of the second key guiding principle is, uh, some, some key operational upgrades, some, maybe even calling it modernization systems. And the one that we have in mind, I know there's several in the Public Works Department that we could probably look at as well, to bring the staff, you know, sort of into more modernized operations. But the other one that, uh, certainly we're gonna bring to the council is implementing a cemetery management, uh, software. So our cemetery records are kept on paper. They have to be looked at through magnifying glass. And God forbid, they get wet or some, or whatever, or they shrivel up or whatever happens to them. We wouldn't know where Grandma's buried. So, um, we want to bring this into the late 20th century and sort of get us a, a system that gets us off of paper. So systems like these have, they tend to have really high one-time implementation costs because the company we would hire would need to come in and basically input all the data, map all the data, get all these paper records into the software system. They tend to be very, not very, but more affordable, um, on an annual basis. But ARPA funding would be, we think, a good use of, you know, that implementation fee that we just don't have lying around in our budget to pay, right? So, um, that's one that we're certainly looking to bring to you. I know that in our Public Works Department, we're trying to modernize those operations as well. So getting GPS, GIS data, getting tablets in the trucks, so that when our crews go out, they, they don't have to come back and look for maps. They know, um, the things are working. Those are also important, but certainly the cemetery one is, is one for sure. We know, um, would be coming your way and would, would really fit neat, uh, well into this category. The third, um, is wastewater treatment, infrastructure, modernization. So I, uh, our new, uh, superintendent of the plants is working with Brian. So our new superintendent of the plants is working with Brian on some replacement of some very important equipment, pumps, and then making some energy efficient upgrades at the plant as well. So we've, we've really focused on wastewater side improvements because that's really unlike the Water Enterprise Fund, the Sewer Enterprise Fund is, is just chronically underfunded. And so we're able to make relatively good updates to the water system and the water plant. The wastewater treatment plant is just not the same. So we think that this would also be a good opportunity to make some of those improvements. They've, they've done great things all, there already. I know it's never perfect, but they've done a really much better job with the odor down on that end of the city. I know, like I said, I know there's, there's times when you can still smell, but I think they've overall made some improvements. We still need to, to keep working there. And because that fund is, is, is not properly funded, it just, there's just not money to make the, the improvements that we think are, are needed. These are, just as a reminder, capital improvements can be built to the town based on our intermunicipal agreement. The big red X there is the one we recommend that we don't do, and that's really, you know, backfill of general fund gaps. So we're going to have, you know, this year we were very fortunate. Legislature came through with a million dollars for us, which is going into our, our next year's budget. And the out years look concerning. We are already going to have, unless we get additional assistance, we're already going to have to make up that million dollars. And I think using one-time resources for operational funding just is never a good recipe. It just builds cliffs, builds cliffs into the budgets that don't go away and just become more painful the next time around. So I think even, even as perilous as things look, it would only get more perilous if we really used ARPA on, on general fund, operational funding that's recurring and that for which we need really a more recurring fund sources. So those are our thoughts on the staff level. You know, like I said, what we're, you know, sort of hoping from the council, just going back to that last slide, is if we've hit the right notes, if you think these are the right themes, what we would do is, you know, basically take those themes and, and get back to you with projects that sort of fit in those, in those buckets. I've mentioned a couple. I know that there were, there could probably be several others that would fit into those categories. And we would look forward to, you know, in subsequent meetings, coming back and saying, hey, would you like to allocate, like I said, for the BOR, right? This is what it'll take to fix the roof. And hopefully with that, we can get to the, to full allocation for the ARPA funding by the end of the calendar year. So that's it for me.
Questions? Yes?
I would say, you know, I think that the two, from a fiscal standpoint, the two things the council needs to prioritize are housing development and helping residents recover, i.e. grand list, and reducing, reducing the best we can, the incredibly large bill that we have for capital needs in the city. And these are things that we need to do and they're only going to get more expensive the longer we do them, or the longer we don't do them, I should say. And we're now hitting the, the time crunch of we have six months to obligate this funding. You know, we have and we are searching for and we are working with the state and the federal government to get as much housing money in as possible, but per the Sanders earmark, you know, that's $50 million. That's not, I don't know that we're going to find a, sorry, taking a step back. My other interest with the 1.4 million dollars was seeing if there was some sort of housing project that we could do with that 1.4. And I just think it's incredibly unlikely that we're going to have something ready enough that we can obligate 1.4 million by December for a housing project. So accepting that premise, I think the guidelines of, you know, I'd make it even more broad of just capital needs and say, staff and co, you know, come back in whatever timeline you need, three weeks, five weeks, whatever it is, with your recommendations and other needs. And then, you know, if the council disagrees on what specific projects, you know, we think we should do, we can have that conversation. But I think the umbrella of, I'm looking at this less than seeing capital needs. And I think the umbrella of capital needs is, at this point, the wisest use of the 1.4.
All good stuff. Yes?
I'm inclined to agree because capital needs gives us some flexibility. So if we do come in with a housing project, we've got that flexibility if it's just capital needs.
Yes. Either.
In the same camp, we've got too many things up here that have been deferred for too long and, and we really need to build that infrastructure so that we can at least feel like we're on some solid ground.
Yes.
Two slightly specific questions, suggestions under the key operational upgrades. One is we've talked to the council previously about an updated website. That might fit under that rubric. And I guess sort of ancillary to updated website. I know a number of us had received a constituent request for an upgrade of the water billing system. A number of houses, my own included, have to physically let someone in to climb down into the basement to dust off the spider webs to look at the water meter before you can report out. And that is especially a problem in landlord owned properties where the tenant may not be able to do that in a timely manner. So some investment in making that a simpler system. I know maybe not necessarily redoing the actual meter, but easing that system might be a great investment. And I guess a meta comment, I'm generally in agreement with everyone else, what I would like to see as we're considering them is considering them in chunks so that we don't approve.
Yeah.
Piece by piece and then get to the end and something really juicy.
Right.
Costs more than we have left. So I don't know what the best proportioning and timing of those chunks might be. I would, I certainly would defer to your planning on that, but would love to look at things as groupings so that we can thoughtfully do that.
And if I may, yeah, I think the, the website, we can look into that. The, the challenge we've encountered is that they, the websites that are, that we like, that other towns have, that, that are very user friendly, they have not just the high implementation, they tend to have a higher annual. So like, I think, just, just for reference, I think our website is $6,000 a year and the ones that we really like that are, you know, not the Cadillac version, but like the, you know, the, what's it, good, Toyota, I guess. I don't know.
Move along for me.
There's 20, 20. To 25, to 20 to 30. So it's, it's a, it's a jump. Yeah, it's a jump. It's a jump. But, you know, like I said, we, we get what we pay for, which is like a really clunky website. So that's, that's the only challenge is that it's, it's not just the implementation, it's the, it's the annual tends to be higher. We are looking at a water billing system and I, I know that Brian and Public Works has had two or three demos, so that is on the horizon as well.
That's exciting. Thank you.
Counselor Deering, then Counselor Spaulding.
I think talking about critical deferred maintenance, you know, we're talking constantly about how we can bring revenue into the community. We talked about a lot, that last year when we were able to do the turf purchase and putting a roof on that building to be able to continue to use it. I think you have some really good ideas here. I, I think that you definitely, you're the manager. You know what we're doing. Really have some great opportunities here. And like we've kind of said, I think that you bring some chunk ideas together for us for approval, I think is definitely, in my opinion, what's next.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes?
So yes, I definitely support these ideas. I also am concerned that we, I think we, as a council, need to recognize that we have to stop kicking the can down the road because we don't get opportunities like this to try to catch up on a regular basis. And so we have to make sure we're building budgets that continue to improve and maintain the infrastructure that's, we all depend upon. And then the thing that I just keep rolling around in my head is the comment that Shawna made for Berry Up earlier and the conversation we had at the JDB Committee Meeting, Justice, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and Belonging, about housing and people who are renting and struggling to be, don't have anywhere to go, but also their need to have improvements made in their apartments. And I don't know what that looks like. I'm sort of just spitballing here, but I wish that there was, because, you know, Shawna just said there's no safety net for people. There's nowhere for anyone to go, even short term, so that their place that they want to stay in can be repaired so that they can then move back. And so it seems to me that there's a need for just basically short-term housing for families, couples, singles, whatever it might be. And I know we don't have housing right now as it is, but how do we try to address some of those needs so that we can then improve the housing stock that we do have to make sure that that is being maintained in the meantime? So I throw that out. I know that that's probably not necessarily doable in this timeframe, but I, it's something that just keeps coming back to me that it's something I think we need to address.
Good stuff. I agree, Counselor Spaulding. I agree with most of it except for it can't be done quickly. City, city places permitted in 60 days, fully permitted. A building, if you had an idea for a 60-unit apartment building in the north end, we could have it permitted in 90 days. So we could identify the need. So, you know, it can happen. I haven't given up on housing because I believe that as we look at the north, north end master plan, I think what makes the most sense is one larger 40 to 60 unit building in the north end so that as those homes are repaired and you could make a number of those units short term, people do have a place to go, even though it's, may not be ideal, you know, for a family, you know, for a family of four in a two-bedroom apartment, but it's short term while we fix their home for them. The, the only other thing I'd like to see on there is place some emphasis on our ability to leverage. So if, if there was, for example, funds that were, you know, a 50% match type thing where we could take this remaining 2 million and, and make it into four, I wouldn't, I, I'm not saying that I would poo-poo some of the infrastructure projects like a BOR. You know, you don't run from a leaky roof. It, it's going to be there regardless of what you do and it's just going to obviously further deteriorate the BOR. But if I just had one suggestion for that, I would, I would focus on areas where we could leverage the money. Yes, ma'am?
Sort of a, a building on that, this is a technical question for Nicholas, I guess, because one thought I had while you were presenting was the auditorium grant, but I'm guessing that we cannot match federal with federal in this case, so we'd have to find ways to leverage that we're not, I don't know, I'm, I'm sort of asking a question that maybe something to look into.
It's, it, it varies program by program, actually. We've run across it in, in a couple of, for example, they were going to allow us, when we did need a match for the odd, they were going to allow us to use some ARPA. So it's, it's, I wouldn't say there's a hard and fast rule. It really depends on the program.
And if you'd like to cruise the 467-page final treasury ruling, I gave up after 30. So that was the end of that.
It's good to hear that.
Counsel, any other, I'm sorry?
It's just good to hear that it could match some things federally.
Nope, it's a good thought.
You know, that can be a limitation.
I have one other ARPA question. I didn't go, I skimmed the notes. I didn't go back and watch the full council meeting from last week. Did the council vote on the $200,000 for? So that's just something.
It's a placeholder.
Okay, I just wanted to, I support it and I want it to be actually voted on.
Yeah, the summary is we, we recognize that, we recognize the unprecedented amount of money that is up for grabs and we also recognize the fact that we do not have the capacity to grab what we need. So the manager is going to come back to us with a proposed RFP next week and which we'll refine and hopefully get out as quickly as we can.
And so just on that, just, this is just for my own note keeping. So we actually have 1.6.
Correct. I said two.
Yeah, yeah, just checking. Just checking.
So just to summarize, the city manager will come back with a list of projects and price tags? I mean, I, I think about the wastewater treatment plant probably more than I should, but I really would like to see those changes happen.
Yeah.
And it makes the city able to go forward in some ways. And obviously also really concerned about housing. So I think it'd be great to come back with a list. And I, I think we can't torment the staff by not having a software program for the cemetery. I mean, some of the stuff we're doing just seems like, it's like asking people to work in 1965 and it's not fair.
Well, so we will. My prediction is we won't be doing it in September. We'll likely push the envelope a little bit because as Counselor Dustin just mentioned, you never know what's going to, and especially with all of these other grants that the city will be pursuing, you just never know what's going to pop up. And even though the state has committed to picking up that 20% match on VEM, they haven't committed for everything. So to your point, Counselor, there could be something that pops up that's really great and we spent the ARPA money and then we're, you know, having a little buyer's remorse. So we'll likely, you know, it'll, it'll go, we got our eye on it. I mean, Nicholas isn't going to let us go to January without doing it. No, no chance of that happening. Any other questions or comments, Counsel, on that issue? Then we'll move to item 8D. This is just a continuation of last week's discussion, City Flood Mitigation Master Plan. The gist of last week's conversation was that there actually are a lot of flood mitigation projects that are identified around the city, but there's not a document that actually prioritizes them. And, and there are a lot of them. I mean, there are some in the Courier Park area. There are some, you know, there are a lot of projects that have been identified in previous administrations and over the last 20, 25 years. You know, when the city experienced flooding and we were successful in getting the lion's share of the flood mitigation grant money, which pales in, you know, in terms of what is available today, I think at that time there was like a million dollars available for the whole county. That was it. And we received 750,000 of that and that's when we did the trash racks over on Brook Street in Harrington that functioned very well in the floods. So, you know, we made that, we made that a priority. It was a project that was pretty much shovel ready and dovetailed with some of the FEMA buyouts, which were among the first the city had ever done. We hadn't done FEMA buyouts before. So I'd just like to see the council set a goal over the next six to 12 months. I think, I think we know the top projects. I mean, no one has, we all have our eye on the trestle. You know, I talked about that. I, I spoke to the secretary last week about it. I spoke to the director this week about it, spoke to Pat Moulton today about it. You know, it's, it's not, believe me, that, that is front and center. But we also have to focus on the other projects that we talked about last week, which are, you know, the bridges on the north end and how we deal with those. And those are not uncomplicated projects in terms of their impact. Those are likely, they got to be top five. I don't know if they're top two, but they got to be top five in the city. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I was just thinking about the flood resiliency, recovery, and buyout PowerPoint, which does have, you know, areas grouped on it, especially, I think maybe it's around slide 30 that it talks about, here are some areas of priority. And I, you know, I know that we've had someone go look at some of the suggested areas to say, yes, this would be a good one. Yes, this would be a good one. So I think the bridges are certainly of concern, but, but also those river buffers are also, you know, I'm not a river scientist, but we might have one who's nearby and could answer some questions like. So I think we can't decide what's going to have the most impact because we don't have those skills. I think we've done a great job of identifying areas, but really we need someone with skills to say, those are the top three.
And part of the, you know, that was part of our ARPA discussion last week, you know, do we, do we purchase that expertise? Do we issue an RFP and, and prioritize these projects, you know, and try to put a price tag on them? So I, I agree, but I think, you know, if we do want to do this, we need to give the manager some direction and say, look, could you, you know, could we keep the discussion at the forefront so that we understand, you know, again, if we wanted, you know, there are grant funds available right now and some of those grant funds are prioritized to communities who want to develop a flood mitigation plan.
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
We've done a lot. We just haven't pulled, there's a lot of info out there. We just haven't put it in priority and put a price tag on it so that as opportunities arise, we know what we can do. Counselor Dustin?
Sure. Just first a sort of scope comment. In previous weeks, we have often, the next two agenda items are technical, are City Flood Ma, City Master Plan and North End Master Plan. I think generally as a council over the last couple I think generally as a council over the last couple of weeks, we've been talking about those two sort of at the same time, so just note that my, my comments will be considering both of them, because I think I've consistently maintained what we need is a city plan, of which the North End is the cornerstone, priority 1A within that plan. So I have been thinking a lot about what, what a plan would look like for the city, what the pieces of it would be, how we could sort of move it, move it through, and I've been thinking of it in three parts. The first is stated aspirational goals, generally. The city will rebuild its infrastructure in a more flood-resilient capacity. The city will support its residents through flood recovery. Really big stuff, but are guiding stars, and I have no idea, I made those up. We would decide, we would confer them as a council. That would be our guiding stars in the absence of any single piece of the plan not working out. The second would be to comb through, as you had just mentioned, there are mitigation steps that have been sussed out in the past, there are mitigation steps that are being suggested now by people studying the most recent flood. There's been a lot of really good community outreach and feedback through work that's been done this fall and this winter, the work that is ongoing through Berryup and other organizations, putting all of that together, and I think therein lies a really rich vein for council. Council discussion, if we look at a list of 67 items, how do we sort those out and things like that, or their input for something further? And then the third piece is, as Counselor Stockwell had mentioned, that the city manager had previously done some really phenomenal work around identifying specific targets on a mapped neighborhood level that we know have the potential to move forward. You could match up a priority item of creating a river buffer with potential parcels. So I could see all of those things going with, and we had briefly mentioned last week, or briefly discussed last week, working with an outside firm that could then take some of our input pieces, some of our things that we consider important and priorities that have come from citizens of every city, and then starting to tease them together into a mapped plan, because Counselor Stockwell just suggested, we don't necessarily have the expertise to, where is the best place to let the river do what the river is going to do? Where is the, along its course? Where is the best place to stop the river? Or to reroute the river? Or to simply raise houses? Because that's, that's what makes sense for that neighborhood. We don't know that yet, but we can set some spaces and some priorities of doing those pieces of those things. So those are the sort of three layers I've been thinking of that, that end up in a plan, and that was a lot of blathering, but I will end with just a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor. You had said just a moment ago, you were thinking this conversation would happen over the next six to 12 months? I just want to check in with you on that to...
A little quicker than that.
That's, I don't know what I was hoping to say.
No, I mean, you know, they, you know, and I, and I just sound like a broken record, but I'm just getting so antsy because, you know, August 16th, I don't know how many of you have gone, if you put in, if you want to fool with the pre-application, it has a first page and you actually have to put your information, just put in, you know, Counselor Spalding, put in your city, and then moved to the next page, you're not submitting it, but you can get an idea of how much is entailed even in the August 16th application.
Just as a hazard mitigation?
Yeah, that's the pre-aplicat, it's not as simple as you think it is. And that's why, so six to 12 months? Three to six weeks?
Good. I just wanted to follow up, you had said that earlier, so I want to make sure. Yes, I agree.
For the VEM grant, isn't SLR helping with preparation? So we don't really have to do it all because they have the expertise?
Not necessarily.
We have to have the information, but they're...
Not necessarily.
But when they were here, they were saying they were going to help with the grant.
They're going to help, they haven't committed to actually, you know, in other words, we have to explain the project to them. We can't, you know, if we said, well, we want to remove, we want to move, raise the Willie Street Bridge, well, they don't even have the background information to submit the application as required. So, yes, they are going to help, but it's not, it's not going to be quite as simple as that. And, you know, it's not going to happen, in my opinion, it's not going to happen without additional capacity. I mean, I didn't, and I never would, but I almost thought about submitting a couple today when I, hey, I'm here anyway. It's, so, three to six weeks, because the, the other project, it actually is easy. If we, if you wanted to permit a 60-unit housing project and you had plans, and plans are not that difficult to come up with, you wouldn't have to have build-ready plans, just conceptual, you could permit it in the city of Berry in, in two months. It's not subject to Act 250. It really wouldn't be that hard to do, and just give you a little warning in advance, that is likely where the EPA grant, where I'm going to recommend we focus our energy with the EPA grant, because you've got to have that big-money item. And what Pat was telling us last week, and she reiterated this week in our conversations, or today, this week's early, was we're going to need to focus on one big thing, and the only thing we could come up with, you know, it's a $10 million grant, so the only thing we could really come up with was a housing project. So that's likely what the recommend will be to counsel at the appropriate time, is that we focus on that. And lastly, Pat and I discussed today that there is no reason, the trestle is not being used now. What I have asked the agency for, and Pat for, is the immediate removal of the trestle. We can have the fight about how it gets rebuilt or if it gets rebuilt, we can have that discussion later on, but even if we said today, no, rebuild it exactly as you want to, it's not going to be rebuilt for two to three years, and it's not being used and cannot be used ever. It's got to be replaced. If, if, if they're going to have, you know, they can't fix it, they're not going to fix it, it's not being used, so why aren't we removing it now? So if the city does flood, God forbid, in the next three years, at least that impediment is gone. So that's kind of where we're at with the City Flood Mitigation Plan. I just think we need to launch the, and we're going to need professional expertise to do it. Heard a lot of good ideas, I think we all want the same thing, we all just want a list of priorities, but we need the technical expertise to get there. Counselor Guston, Zach?
So next steps for, and again, like Counselor Guston, thinking about the flood mitigation plan and the North End plan, sort of as one big thing. Next steps are to compile a list of all of the flood mitigation stuff that we're already doing, is to RFP or contract or ask the state to connect us with some river scientists so that they can make their own recommends and put that into one big document to EPA grant. Right?
Well, the, the document would support the EPA grant as well as, you know, the $90 million from Vermont Emergency Management that's up for grabs.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it, you know, I mean, don't, I don't want to mislead anyone. You know, the, the North End, whatever we start out with as a North End Master Plan will likely change.
Oh, totally.
Over time. It'll likely change next year, two years.
Well, it should, you never get away from the first draft.
My opinion on the North End is we need to start with one big thing, one large, you know, as we heard from Shawna this evening, there's, you know, the lack of housing, the lack of a safety net where folks can even go in the first place, and I think that tells a great story that, you know, and that's always been what our discussion has come back to. Well, for the folks who decide they want to pursue flood mitigation plans, so they own five, five homes, for example, in the North End, and they decide, you know what, even if there's a 20% match, I love my home, and if I can raise my home above flood level for $20,000, a $100,000 project, but I can do it for $20,000, I'll do it. That, it's my home and I want to do it. Well, we're not going to have a place for those people to go while the homes get raised. So...
So then, second part of that question is for North End Master Plan, one big thing. Next steps, expectation is that the manager, the mayor, and Pat are going to huddle and come up with an idea for one big thing? The council should send you and Pat?
Oh, no, 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 the council actually, you know, it will be presented to the council and we vote on it as a council, and that's what the city does.
But what's the development of?
What's the development look like? We've talked about...
Where, where, where is this?
We've talked about Wabi Park.
Who's doing the one big thing? Who is suggesting the one big thing, whatever it is?
Pat. Because we discussed a lot of this last week. You need a lead applicant. The city will likely be successful in securing a lead applicant. It won't be the city because of the, the time and resources involved in, in maintaining it. So what we talked about was, Pat said the, the one thing that the organizations who were considering working with us were, kept saying is, don't hand us seven projects that will have a bunch of moving parts that we can't manage. We think you're best off going for one big thing, and at $10 million, that one big thing would likely be housing.
And when Pat brings this, the council, you know, it's not a take it or leave it, right?
No, we can edit.
Give our own input as to what the one big thing is, and then once we've reached consensus, vote on that and use that as the poster child for...
Exactly. So it's not, this is what you're voting on and you're stuck with it. It's, this is the concept that we're going to submit for the grant application, and the concept can change. Counselor Stockwell?
So this is in reference to the EPA grant?
Yes.
Which were not a great fit, but it's great money.
Correct. Yeah, this is not the VEM grant, I know there's a lot going on, this is the EPA grant that Pat discussed last week. Counselor Guston?
Sort of to, directly in, in response to that, I would actually love if Pat could present like three big things, that, that, with different merits and different pros and cons and things like that, for us to sort of bounce back and forth, and as, you know, they will change, the final whatever would change, but three, and they could be similar, but three variations on three big things would be great, or at least to have options, I guess, is my ultimate goal here. And then second, just to respond, pick up a piece that, of the conversation earlier, I've been thinking about this plan, so my background is in nonprofit world, if I write a big million-dollar grant, they want to see my five-year strategic plan for the organization to know that I have thought about where this funding is going to fit in with a planned course of action and a planned strategic decisions by the organization. So I'm thinking of this plan as the background to grants that we might write, saying, look, we have indeed thought about this piece as much, a much larger plan, here's how it fits in, here's how you help us advance the larger plan, because there are going to be other opportunities beyond the hazard mitigation and the EPA grants, some of them smaller dollar, that may address pieces of the plan, and if we can get that all to work together, that's, that's the ticket.
Yep, agreed. Although I'm not sure, I don't, I don't see that we have the luxury of the time to fully develop three concepts. You'll, counsel, I could certainly see the council getting a choice of, choice of sites, saying, here are some different sites we could develop. You know, we've talked about Wabi Park already, so we could say, okay, here's what a housing unit might look like at Wabi Park, we've worked with a developer, we see a 60-unit building would easily fit on that site, it would look like this, X percentage would be affordable, X percentage would be homeownership, homeownership opportunity condominium type, you know, X percent would be market rate. But I don't think we'd have, you know, the building would be portable, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily get that level of detail, you'd have to pick in advance and decide what site you want to develop, and under, and under what criteria. So, you know, what percentage would be owned, what percentage would be affordable, what percentage would be subsidized, what percentage would be market rate. So it would likely look some, just to be clear, it would be a site that the council would pick, and the building would be sort of transportable. Does that make sense?
And I think this assumes that Pat is going to look at all of the input that we've done, like, look at all the notes from all the various community visits that we've had as she's putting together.
Yeah, and, and, you know, again, the biggest enemy is time. I mean, you heard Pat say last week, we've got to have this in by the end of August. So that's why, you know, I mean, anyone who wants to work on it, love to have your help, because it's just a lot of work that needs to be done, and we don't, you know, we're going to have to make some decisions, that's all. Anything, we sort of covered D and E sort of at the same time.
It's sort of been our...
Might as well just be one.
And, and people, I want to be clear about one thing, you know, I'm used to making decisions every day, and when you run your own businesses, you know this, Counselor Spalding, that's how you roll. And sometimes, so I'm used to making decisions. I want to hear from people about the North End. I want to hear, so as we move through this process and we pick the projects that we're going to submit for, I really want to hear from people. But I want to warn people in advance that we don't have the luxury of time. You know, if someone said, well, you know, I can't make this meeting and I couldn't make this meeting, schedule a third one, my answer's probably going to be no. Maybe it'll be yes, it depends on how much time we have. My biggest concern is our ability to move through the process and do something good and something meaningful. So, you know, I just want to, I guess this is my begging people, closest I can ever come to begging, please stay engaged. You know, when you see those meetings and we want to hear from you, please talk back. You know, attend the meetings and, and engage, because it's going to be really important over the next few months that residents who want to be heard, I promise you will be heard if you show up, but you got to show up for us. So with that, I'm sorry.
If I can just follow up briefly on that?
Sure.
I fully agree, and I, I also, this is making me think that it's going to be important to me personally, that once we get some ideas for this big thing, that we make sure that there is a space and a time and a mechanism for that resident feedback that isn't just come to council. So just before we make a final decision, I would like an interim place for that conversation.
Yes.
This is related but unrelated, so I would like to ask that we stop calling it a master plan because it connotates slavery and a master. So if we could call it a comprehensive plan, or a strategic plan, or a long-term plan, so just ask to be conscious of our language, that's all.
I think, yeah, take off on, certainly no offense intended, take off, we have a city master plan that's on our webpage, we can take that off.
Well, I think we just need to be cognizant that we, we use lots of words and we don't really think about why we're using those words, so I just would just recommend that we think of...
I think of it as a long-term recovery plan.
Yes, so let's call it what it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Going on Counselor Guston's comments about planning capacity and developing strategic organization, but also I was just thinking about, nowhere have we defined the components of any kind of plan. We have a zillion plans, right? There are a million plans. So, and I think sometimes we get loggerheads because you're saying, we needed this kind of plan, we needed that kind of plan, but I think what would be really useful, if maybe next week we come with, here are the components, here's what should be a part of it. You know, we have the buyouts that are, that are already, you know, that we're already working on, we have areas planned, we have bridges that we want to be removed, so we have all these components. We don't have a citywide, you know, we don't, we don't have something that takes in all the citywide, but if we come with it, like, here are the components. It should include stormwater runoff, it should include catch patients, it should include how many houses and, you know, where should be the densest housing, so that we have, we know what we're talking about when we're talking about a plan, rather than just saying, we don't have it, we do have it, we have this. I think that'd be a useful exercise for us.
We could do that.
Last quick thing, when should we expect, Pat? You think in two weeks, three weeks? Assume not next week?
Can't be any more than a month.
Okay.
You know, it just...
I have some other thoughts, so I'll share them with you, the manager and Pat.
Yeah, it just can't, I mean, I'll, I can send you regular emails and updates and let you know how we're doing. You know, again, it's just putting ourselves in a position to best take advantage of the opportunities, and there are a lot of them. So under upcoming business, counsel, Mr. Manager, what do you see us, what you near crystal ball?
Yeah, so we have, on the second, we have the housing revolving loan fund is the big one we're working on now with us. I'm sure there'll be others that come up between now and then, but that's the one, the big one on our plates to get ready for council discussion.
And counsel, as much as I hate to ruin summer, I would like to... And council, as much as I hate to ruin summer, I would like to take a brief look, say in the next 30 days to six weeks, about what our budget is likely going to look like next year. Sooner we can take a peek at it.
Yeah, it, it, it'll be, I mean, we'll just be getting into the fiscal year. It probably won't be very different from what we shared on May 21st. So we can certainly re-up that, but it, there just probably won't be a lot of data that changes the, the underlying. I mean, it'll probably be frankly the same presentation at that point because of where we are in the fiscal year. We, we won't probably get any sort of different standing until October usually, November.
Reduce that to a tax rate? I know I did. I sent it to you. I reduce your numbers to a tax rate. In other words, what, what can we expect in terms of a tax rate given?
Yeah.
Given grand list growth, which we don't even know what that's going to be, yeah?
Yeah. I haven't, I, I don't, I don't, I'm not there yet myself, but I know we are, we will be looking to, I think at the next meeting, come to the council with the extension for PVR for setting the tax rates in August as they work through the final grand list.
Perfect. So that's what we've got coming up. We are at roundtable. Counselor Stockwell, do you mind if I start with you?
I just wanna thank everybody who's been working on the school budget and talking about the school budget and trying to get a school budget passed. I really appreciate their work, their commitment, and I can't thank them enough for their commitment.
Counselor Spaulding.
Well, I would echo that. I would also encourage everyone to vote tomorrow if you still have those green ballots because it sounds like a lot of people do. They should be dropped off tomorrow, those green absentee ballots. And so I would just encourage people to get out and vote. And then I also am curious, as we were also, the other thing that Shawna talked about as we come up on the anniversary, and I know that Montpelier's doing some kind of art thing for the anniversary of the flood, I wonder if there's something that we might think about doing here in the city just to commemorate and come together because it might be some, an opportunity for us to create and build some community. So I don't know what it looks like, I'm just throwing it out there.
I don't know what that looks like. Counselor Wazzaak.
Acknowledging that Juneteenth is on Wednesday, which acknowledges the word of, in Galveston, Texas, sleeves there, received word of the Emancipation Proclamation and it's the, I believe the first time the state of Vermont is officially recognizing it as a holiday. So, you know, read a book, do some Google searching, learn some history. I'll pass.
Thank you. Yes.
I echo the please vote and hopefully support the schools.
Counselor Guston.
I would echo what everyone says to please vote. And I would just, on a lighter note, as I'm a justice of the peace as well, and I have done two weddings in the last two days, which is always really lovely to do. So thank you to the couples who reached out to me.
Counselor Deary.
Honored to be part of the end of year celebrations at Berry City School today. Lots of staff honored, lots of people honored, some even 25 years plus with the school district. So on that message of school being out today, just be careful this summer. Drive safely. Be cognizant, be aware of those around you and try to provide some opportunity for those that you may not really think about. And again, get out tomorrow and vote. I will be at the polls working.
Okay, and with that, council, we do need an executive session. I believe there are two issues.
Two brief items, yeah.
One is.
Real estate and personnel.
And one is personnel. Anyone care to make the motion for findings?
They're moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. There's a motion for findings for the council to go into executive session, joined by the manager for a real estate and matter and a personal matter, two separate matters. All those who favor the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, thank you very much. And now we need a motion to go into executive session, please.
So moved. Second.
It's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those who favor the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, council is in executive session.